Board meeting check, check, check. Board meeting check. Check one, two. Okay, Jacob, do you hear me? Board meeting November 20th. Audio video test.
Good evening. I will now call to order the regular board of education meeting for Chico Unified School District. It's November 20th, 2024, 5:00 p.m. The board will be going into closed session at this time. It looks like there's no public comment today. And so the board will reconvene in open session at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. We opened the meeting at 5:00 PM, so I will say again, welcome to the November 20th, 2024 Chico Unified School Board Regular Meeting. We were in closed session and there was no action taken during closed session. And just a reminder that this meeting is recorded and livestreamed. And with that, let's please stand for the flag salute.
We have student reports next, so I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Staley.
Thank you. I love doing the flag salute when we have kids here. You guys keep us on task, for sure. So, we are very fortunate tonight to have a big crowd to listen to some very talented students and to introduce them, I'd like to invite up their principal, Ms. Joanne Betancourt.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Let me adjust this, sorry. I'd just like to introduce our Sierra View chorus. They meet during the school day. Fourth and fifth grade students have the option to join chorus and since it's during the school day, it's open to all students, which is equitable for all. These students who are in chorus are participating in addition to their regular music class during the week. Mrs. Hunter, our fabulous music teacher, has been teaching the chorus voluntarily. And she believes so strongly that elementary choral ensemble has both academic benefits and social emotional benefits. By singing in a school chorus, students are engaging in benefits beyond learning to read and understand music. They are working together toward a common goal, building connections with their classmates and the world beyond them. We are happy to have a chorus at Sierra View School. The first song they will be performing is called Hime Matove. The words are in Hebrew, but the translation is "how good it is for the breath in to dwell together in peace." I hope you enjoy this piece.
You know I can't leave without saying something into the microphone. I'm so excited for this opportunity for our chorus to come and perform for the school board. Since I came back to Chico in 2018, we've made wonderful progress with our elementary music programs and I feel so lucky to be able to teach every single student at Sierra View. Having teachers that span from kindergarten through fifth grade creates such a wonderful experience for students as they grow throughout elementary school. I will say that with music and art in their new expanded forms, it takes space. I would not be able to do what I do at Sierra View without a classroom teaching space. As the district continues to modernize and grow, it is important to remember that the arts need and deserve classroom space in order to run successful programs. Stages, although fantastic for performances, are not the same as having a classroom space. A music room is a place of great learning and as we grow our programs, remember that spaces dedicated to art and music are essential for musical and artistic growth. I would like to acknowledge the support of our principal, Joanne Betancourt, the fourth and fifth grade classroom teachers at Sierra View for supporting these students, and to their parents and families for bringing them here to perform tonight. I also want to acknowledge my accomplice Sherri Summers for playing piano tonight. Next, you're going to hear a quick body percussion piece about the weather, followed immediately by a choir favorite, an arrangement of a Russian folk song called Minka. Thank you again for having our chorus tonight and providing an opportunity to showcase elementary music programs. Thank you.
Great job, Sierra View students. That was amazing. Do we have one more or no? Okay, all right. All right, Mrs. Hunter, I'd like to have you come up here to the podium. We have something special for you. So, I may have tricked you to get you here, but you are going to be receiving the superintendent's award tonight. So, I'd like to talk a little bit about Nora and the amazing educator she is. When I first came to Sierra View about a year ago, I couldn't help but notice all the energy and passion that Nora exhibits. She is the true definition of above MB. And
Action taken during closed session. And just a reminder that this meeting is recorded and livestreamed. And with that, let's please stand for the flag salute. We have student reports next, so I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Staley.
Thank you. I love doing the flag salute when we have kids here. You guys keep us on task, for sure. So, we are very fortunate tonight to have a big crowd to listen to some very talented students. And to introduce them, I'd like to invite up their principal, Ms. Joanne Betancourt.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. You, let me adjust this, sorry. I'd just like to introduce our Sierra View chorus. They meet during the school day. Fourth and fifth grade students have the option to join chorus, and since it's during the school day, it's open to all students, which is equitable for all. These students who are in chorus are participating in addition to their regular music class during the week. Mrs. Hunter, our fabulous music teacher, has been teaching the chorus voluntarily. And she believes so strongly that elementary choral ensemble has both academic benefits and social emotional benefits. By singing in a school chorus, students are engaging in benefits beyond learning to read and understand music. They are working together toward a common goal, building connections with their classmates and the world beyond them. We are happy to have a chorus at Sierra View School. The first song they will be performing is called "Hime Matove." The words are in Hebrew, but the translation is "how good it is for the brethren to dwell together in peace." I hope you enjoy this piece.
You know I can't leave without saying something into the microphone. I'm so excited for this opportunity for our chorus to come and perform for the school board. Since I came back to Chico in 2018, we've made wonderful progress with our elementary music programs, and I feel so lucky to be able to teach every single student at Sierra View. Having teachers that span from kindergarten through fifth grade creates such a wonderful experience for students as they grow throughout elementary school. I will say that with music and art in their new expanded forms, it takes space. I would not be able to do what I do at Sierra View without a classroom teaching space. As the district continues to modernize and grow, it is important to remember that the arts need and deserve classroom space in order to run successful programs. Stages, although fantastic for performances, are not the same as having a classroom space. A music room is a place of great learning, and as we grow our programs, remember that spaces dedicated to art and music are essential for musical and artistic growth. I would like to acknowledge the support of our principal, Joanne Betancourt, the fourth and fifth grade classroom teachers at Sierra View for supporting these students, and to their parents and families for bringing them here to perform tonight. I also want to acknowledge my accomplice, Sherri Summers, for playing piano tonight. Next, you're going to hear a quick body percussion piece about the weather, followed immediately by a choir favorite, an arrangement of a Russian folk song called "Minka." Thank you again for having our chorus tonight and providing an opportunity to showcase elementary music programs. Thank you.
Great job, Sierra View students. That was amazing. Do we have one more, or no? Okay, alright. Alright, Mrs. Hunter, I'd like to have you come up here to the podium. We have something special for you. So, I may have tricked you to get you here, but you are going to be receiving the Superintendent's Award tonight. So, I'd like to talk a little bit about Nora and the amazing educator she is. When I first came to Sierra View about a year ago, I couldn't help but notice all the energy and passion that Nora exhibits. She is the true definition of above and beyond, from helping all grade levels with their individual productions, doing live music, to finding opportunities for each grade level to do a performance for families. She has really brought the Sierra View community together to celebrate students and families. And here's what some of your peers had to say. It's a lot. Nora is extremely positive and puts the kids in the forefront of her day. She has increased our school spirit and student pride in their school with her creative ideas. We are so lucky to have her. Nora could teach a masterclass on classroom management. She is a pro. We are so fortunate to have her as an integral part of our team. Sierra View is incredibly fortunate to have Nora. She's a passionate, talented music teacher whose dedication shines. She brings a wealth of creative, inspiring ideas to her classroom and always willing to put the hard work to bring them to life. Nora has a gift for connecting with every student, creating a music experience that is not only educational, but also engaging and full of joy. Her unique approach benefits the entire school. Nora adapts her instruction to meet the developmental needs of our TK students. As the age range continues to get younger, the kids look forward to her upbeat energy and positivity. Nora brings joy and creativity to our school through music. She is also a tireless advocate for keeping the arts in our elementary schools. Sierra View is incredibly lucky to have Nora on our team. What a team player Nora is. She goes above and beyond for every grade level and her classroom teacher. Nora has truly changed the culture of our school. Her love and dedication to the students is inspiring. She truly goes above and beyond every day in every way. We are so lucky to have her. Nora, I am honored to present to you the Superintendent's Award tonight. Congratulations. Okay, I have one more award to present. At this time, I would like to ask Gee Tal Lore to come on up to the podium. Ms. Gee is our amazing targeted case manager. As you know, targeted case managers or TCNs are very special people. They work to build the bridge between the home and the school. They provide support for families, help them find resources, all while helping the school and staff any way they can. Gee is an integral part of our wellness team. She checks students into the wellness center every morning as they drop in. She helps supervise activities in the wellness center and helps students who may be having a difficult time transitioning from home to school. Gee is such a positive person, always sees the glass half-full. Here's what the Sierra View staff had to say about Gee. Gee is always willing to help others. She does it with a calm, loving presence. Her heart for others shines through all that she does. We are so lucky to have her at Sierra View. She truly makes a big difference in our community. Gee continually shares her positive, loving personality with the students and staff at Sierra View. She advocates for students and their families by connecting them with resources and community programs they may otherwise be unaware of. We are so fortunate to have Gee on our team. Gee has the sweetest, kindest, most calming presence. She effortlessly connects with teachers, families, and students alike. I've seen her offer support in the most challenging situations and always willing to go above and beyond to help. As a colleague, she is truly a breath of fresh air anytime I see her on campus. Gee is such an asset to our school community. She has a gentle way of connecting with students and families. I greatly appreciate her willingness to come in my classroom to assist with classroom parties when she is available. She has an internal desire to help children succeed. She is such an asset to our school community. She exudes peace, love, stability, and comfort. Our students, families, and staff are so fortunate to have her on our team. Whenever I see her, my heart smiles. Gee is always willing to jump up and help wherever we need support. Gee, I'm honored to present to you the Superintendent's Award. Congratulations.
So, it was certainly Sierra View's night to shine. Students, you were incredible. I really appreciate your patience. You were so quiet and well behaved, but your talent was amazing. And thank you to all the parents and staff who showed out to support our Sierra View honorees tonight. So, you are more than welcome to stay, but we also know you may have things you want to do tonight, so if you want to leave, you can by all means do that as well.
Alright, I think we're ready to move on. Moving along, so much excitement. That was fun. Alrighty, next on the agenda is announcements, and I wanted to see if any board members have any announcements they'd like to make. I have a couple of statements I wanted to say that were inspired in the last 10 minutes, 20 minutes. First of all, she's not in here anymore, but I wanted to thank the music teacher from Sierra View, Nora, for advocating for art and music space on campuses. I think that was a really, that was a really great plug to put in there. I always encourage our staff people who come to present to please advocate for yourselves to the board, because we don't always hear it. But that rolls into a bigger, a big thank you to our community for passing Measure C. Oh, she is still here. Nora, I was just thanking you for being an advocate for space. So, with the community's approval of Measure C, we get to move forward with our facilities' master plan. And as part of the facilities' master plan, I'm on the committee in the last year and a half. A big part of the discussion, next to equity, was also the expansion of arts and music. And so, with the passage of Prop 2 and Measure C and this updated facilities' master plan that we feel really good about and have gotten a lot of good feedback on, I think we're really headed in a great direction and have a strong future for our next phase of the master plan. So, that's really, really exciting. So, just can't thank our community enough for being supportive of those efforts. And to continue to hold the district accountable, because that's what it's all about. I mean, the last thing I wanted to say in this moment tonight is that we do have an absence on the board this evening. Our board member, Matt Tennis, was unable to make it this evening. He did take his family on a trip across the ocean, you know, leading into Thanksgiving vacation, and sounds like a great opportunity to, you know, experience some culture and just have some good family time. So, I think that they deserve that. So, with that, we do have to do a voice vote for every item, which means we all have to vote individually instead of just being able to say aye. So, just if anybody's wondering why we're taking all the time in the world to approve our things.
And I was just going to tag on to your election announcements. We do have two new board members coming on to the school board, and both are present tonight, Tisha Hayes and Gail Olson. Thank you for joining us. They are here with us tonight.
Thank you for mentioning that. So, in December, with the regular meeting, I don't know the date right now off the top of my head, I'm sure they probably do, there will be the swearing-in ceremony for the new board members, and I will no longer be sitting up here. I get to also take a little break right into the sunset, as I have been saying. So, welcome to the future for your next four years, and I'm just excited to see how the board progresses and the district, you know, grows from here. Exciting, exciting stuff, a lot of exciting things happening for Chico Unified. Alright, moving along to items from the floor. We didn't have anybody sign up for items on the floor. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address the board at this time for any items that are not on the agenda, which is this point in time, the appropriate time to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to consent calendar. Is there anybody that would like to pull an item from consent for further discussion? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
I will move adoption of the consent calendar.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Member Lando and a second by Member Robinson. Any further discussion from the board on consent? Hearing none. We can start with our roll call vote with Mr. Lando.
Lando, aye.
Dolby, aye.
Concan, aye.
Robinson, aye.
Okay, we have four yeses and one absent. I'm not going to repeat that all night, by the way, just for brevity. Alrighty, and that moves us into our discussion action calendar. 9.1 under Board is, Item 1 is the Discussion Action, Approval of Chico Unified School District Superintendent Contract. So, folks who've been following the district's operations closely, especially those of you listening in on YouTube, know that in September, the board had, following Superintendent Staley's announcement of retirement after 18 amazing years as superintendent with the district, more so with the district beyond those 18 years, the board decided to enter into a contract with the Butte County Office of Education to assist the board in superintendent search. And through that process, we were able to organize four meetings, four input meetings, two community meetings, and two staff meetings, and send out a survey that got hundreds of responses, so that the community could provide input on what qualities we were looking for in Chico Unified's next superintendent. From there, the applicants sent in their materials, and we had decided to select a pretty sizable panel of folks to review those applications. Each board member had the opportunity to select one member of the community that they felt was representative of, you know, their constituents to be part of that panel. There was a union presence on the panel, there was, I think, even cabinet presence on the panel for paper screening. So, those applications went through a pretty rigorous process. I spent 20 hours myself on it when I was on vacation. And then, the Butte County Office of Ed folks that were facilitating the process for us then moved a certain number of folks forward for the first round of interviews. And so, in this process, those folks went to a full day of interviews, actually were interviewed two times in that day by two separate community panels. Each panel had two board members, again, a selection of community members that we had determined, you know, was a broad reflection of our community, a very diverse group of folks that came from all different backgrounds. Again, a union presence and other staff. Am I missing anybody in that? Big, two big panels, a long day of interviews, and by the end of that first technical round of interviews, the panel discussed three people to move forward to the final round of interviews, which was with the board. And so, from there, we had another day of interviews, and we felt like we got really great input from the community at large, from staff, to kind of lead us to this specific agenda item. So, tonight, we are taking into consideration a new contract for an individual that the community has moved forward and the board has selected to be Chico Unified's next superintendent. Before I call for a motion, I do want to ask if there are any, if there's any questions that the board would like to clarify, or any statements that the board would like to clarify about the process at this time. Did it okay? Okay, thank you. Not too long? Great. And I actually want to ask if there's any public comment on this item from any folks in the audience? Alrighty, and then, nobody signed up, right? Okay. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion. I move to approve the superintendent contract with Gregory Blake for a three-year term with a base salary of $270,000, in addition to the other terms and conditions set forth in the contract. And just for public's knowledge, there are copies of the contract for review as well. So, that's the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Alright. We can also go into further discussion. I just want to acknowledge that Greg's here in the audience. Greg comes, you know, to this point in the process for approval with years of experience as a superintendent in Thermolito, and before that, thank you, and I'm sure that you will have a chance to give your own qualifications, but we know that Greg knows the community and is ready to lead Chico Unified into these next exciting phases, and also work with an incredible team of folks on our senior cabinet and the rest of the district staff and our kiddos and families. So, I think we're excited about this decision we're going to make. Does anybody have any further discussion that they would like to plug in?
I don't think so, just looking forward to the next couple of years and watching the transition play out smoothly in a way that keeps our students centered at all times.
Alright, so, we have a motion and a second? Who was the second? Oh, okay, thank you. Did you get that, Rosio? Okay. I skipped right over it in my brain. Let's do a roll call vote. We'll start with you, Mr. Lando.
Lando, aye.
Dolby, aye.
Concan, aye. Concan, aye.
Robinson, aye.
All righty, so it's unanimous. This board has approved Gregory Blake as Chico Unified's next superintendent. I'd like to invite you up to, to, to speak. You can, we can even turn your microphone around if you'd like to address the audience. You can talk to us.
Well, I have about a 45-minute preparation, prepared speech. So if, you know, if everybody wants to get comfortable. No, I just, I just really want to take a moment. I'm, I'm just very excited and I, I'm very, this is, this is actually making me a little bit more emotional than I expected to be. This is really, really cool. I will say this. I am, I want to really thank the Board of Trustees for entrusting me with the leadership of your school district. I guess I could even say it's our school district now. And, and I am so looking forward to working with the community and the, the kids and the parents and the families and this fabulous group of administrators and teachers and staff members that you have here. It's, you've got really good things going on here. We're very excited about the bond. And I mean, this is, this is going to be really, really great times coming up. And I'm very excited. And I realize also that I have very big shoes to fill with Kelly. I appreciate you, and I still have you on, that's right, I still have you on speed dial, though. So if I need you, Kelly and I have known each other. This is actually, I'm just so real quick. This is my 12th year as a, as a superintendent in the county. I've lived in this area essentially since 1985, when I came to Chico State. So it is, I'm really, really committed to our North State, Butte County, Chico. This is going to be fantastic. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I appreciate all of you. Thank you for your votes. And I look forward to meeting everybody. And I'm looking forward to working with our new, two new board members in the back, too. So thank you. All right. Well, hey, all right, I'm going to step away now. Thank you very much.
Oh, wow, that's really special. Well, I'm glad that you could be here, too. You know, just for sake of ceremony, would you like to sign now, or we could wait until the end?
Yes, let's do it.
All right.
Is it blue?
It is. Step to la. Can we do one letter with each one? All right.
Just for housekeeping purposes, the contract starts July 1st, 2025. So we get to keep Kelly for another six months, and she can, she can button things up and guide Greg into his, his shiny seat. Yes, ease him into it. All right. I do want to say that, you know, part of the process was getting that input from the community. And some, some of the comments that I heard was, you know, somebody with experience, somebody who knew the community, knew the district, somebody who was passionate about special education, somebody who had secondary experience as well as elementary experience, and, and somebody that had a sense of humor. And Greg really checked all those boxes as we were reviewing and going through those interviews. So we're just so thrilled. I'm so thrilled that, that it's worked out this way. So excited to see, as a parent, when I won't be on the board anymore, I'm just going to be a regular citizen, and, and you will be the superintendent of my child, who's sitting behind you in the audience. All righty, so much, so much buildup to that moment. We're going to move on in the, in the agenda, finish up this meeting. Next on the agenda under Board is Discussion Action for the Chico Unified School District Board Self-Evaluation. And then I was wondering, Kelly, do you have, do you have that? We have a little snafu because our typical, our regular matron saint of our meetings wasn't able to make it tonight suddenly. So she usually has the, the technical documents ready for us. So every year, the board goes through a self-evaluation process. There's a rubric, there are multiple categories to reflect on the board and the jobs of the board, and then individual reflect on ourselves as a trustee. This year, I think that there's just been so much kind of going on with the school bond measure and the elections, you know, and as well as our superintendent search. We didn't have full participation of board members for this year's self-evaluation. I am guilty of that, and I'm going to just put myself on blast and say I didn't, I didn't actually submit this. But we do have some other responses. I do feel like if I was just going to give a sense of how I felt this, this time without giving us scores, this last year has been truly a pleasure working with this group of people. And I think that, you know, we've, we've really gotten into a routine of, of, we've synthesized into a good working group. And so I feel like my average score for the board as a self-evaluation would have been the highest that, that it's been in my four years as a, as a board member. So that's my two cents there. So this is a Discussion Action item. We could have additional comments. Would you like to?
Yeah, when you're ready, yeah.
Okay, I am ready. I'm just rambling at this point.
Well, as we've already discussed, we, this is a moment of transition for Chico Unified in a lot of ways. We're new board, new superintendent, possibility of new facilities as we've got the bond passed. It's really a good time, especially starting next year when the new board comes in, to really nail down a better way to evaluate ourselves and make sure that we are holding ourselves and the district responsible for a really concrete and clear set of goals and metrics. So I look forward to improving this process as we move forward. I think it is something that because it's been such a busy year, we have led slide, and I think it's something we need to rectify. So I look forward to working with all of our new team members to do exactly that.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the things that I think we found in the process of doing these self-evaluations was that it is important to self-reflect. We have highlighted and brought forward our, our need to spend a little bit more time in bringing the group together as a, I don't, I want to, don't want to say working body, because we do work together. But how we do that, and how we grow to understand each other's points of view, and, and then accept them if they're, you know, not exactly aligned with our own, has been a real growth process for me. And I appreciate, too, that our two new board members are going to join us and will, in your memory, redesign our forms. You were so good at telling us what we needed to do. And I think we've learned what we need to do. And thank you for that. And look forward to going through this all next year. It's been, it's been a worthwhile process.
So I, yeah, I just echo, or to maybe cap it off, the process of the self-evaluation is something that existed, and it's existed in this, in this form for a long time. And I think that it is, it is ready for a transition. And I think we've talked about it for a couple of years now. And to be able to recognize when there are differences on the board, as there should be, because we are supposed to be reflective of our, our entire community, that we, we see the differences, we acknowledge them, and we move on with decision-making and not get hung up on emotions, so to speak, because we are a governing body. And so with that, too, is how, how we self-reflect should also be reflective of our constituents. So sometimes it felt weird to, you know, give myself scores as an individual, like, I'm just great, I'm going to give myself all fives. And so how do we kind of make it more introspective? I think that that is the task at hand if we want to make this a meaningful activity or process. And that's, that's kind of what I'll say to put a, put a pin in it. Do we need to approve it?
That is completely up to the board. If you want to just approve the scores that you had and say you're done, that's fine. If you just say, you know what, we didn't get to it this year, and we're just going to let it be, that's fine as well. It's not something we have to do.
Yeah. What is the feeling of the board?
I'd like to put it on the, in the record, just as a reminder that we do need to continue to improve in this area.
There you go, Greg. Do you want to put in a motion?
Yeah. So I would move that we accept the results of the school board's self-evaluation survey as our official evaluation for the year.
Thank you, Mr. Lando. I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry for
You're good.
talking some more. But it is, a school board is such an interesting position, right? In that we have a community, both locally and at large, that is so terribly divided on a lot of things. And yet, one of the things that a school board specifically tries to do is deliberate and then support whatever, whatever outcome comes out, right? We, we have no individual authority. We only have authority as at least three out of five, and more often than not, five out of five. So this kind of process is really important in anchoring us in that and reminding us that we can disagree with other individuals and still support the outcome, or at the very least, still support the process. And that, that kind of practice of participating even when you disagree is something that I think we really need to notice and call out and continue to work on as a school, community, a city, and again, at large. So I would like to say thank you to all of my fellow board members for the hard work they do in putting up with the rest of us. Thank you.
All righty. With that, let's go ahead and we'll just do our roll call vote. We'll start with, with you at the end.
Lando, aye.
Dalby, aye.
Concan, aye.
Robinson, aye.
All righty. Let that be put in the record for this year, and with the acknowledgement that we would like to revamp it a bit, to be more introspective. Moving on to Business Services Discussion Action, Architect Selection for Blue Oak Charter School, New Construction Planning and Programming. It is exciting. There's not just Chico Unified, but also our charter schools have some exciting things coming up. And I just can't wait to hear what Julie has to say about it.
Thank you, and good evening. Before I start, I just want to thank Trustee Dalby. It's just been a pleasure working with you. Having your thoughtful and educated participation on key topics for my department throughout the last couple of years have been, has been really rewarding. The Facilities Master Plan, the development of and the deliberation of all of the detail and the implementation of the plan, the charter negotiations for their portion of Measure C, and then the bond in general, helping us get that out, get it passed by the voters. It's just been a great process, and really appreciate all of your support and help with those facilities things while you were here. Thank you. So tonight, we have an exciting thing to talk about with Blue Oak Charter School. As you know, the district purchased land with Measure K dollars for the future home of Blue Oak. Since September, Blue Oak Facilities Committee and Board have been working towards selection of an architectural firm to start with the programming and planning process for that future building, or buildings, whatever it ends up being. So tonight, we're bringing forward their recommendation. They did have several firms that they evaluated and interviewed. The district is in support of their selection of Russell Galloway and Associates, our G.A. of Chico, to move forward with planning and programming for Blue Oak Charter School. Planning and programming, you may ask, what does that mean? So that means that our G.A. will meet with their school population, their teachers and leaders and students, and define what their needs are. And then try to put together a conceptual plan that meets their needs and get a cost estimate of how much that construction will cost. So our G.A. has provided a proposal that's in your packet for $37,500 to perform those services, which will start almost immediately in December and then conclude in March with a conceptual plan for the school, which then we will have a cost estimate for, and will come back to the board before any further costs are incurred. So with that, if you have any questions, we have Susan and Tricia here from Blue Oak Charter School to help answer any questions that the board might have. Thank you.
No, I don't think there are any questions. Just excited to see this project get off the ground.
Sorry, Susan, I want to have questions to ask you, but I can't think of any. I know. You came, you came and sat, sat through it all already. Just excited for you, and for the school, and for the families and students of Blue Oak.
Yeah. For those of you who haven't followed the Blue Oak saga, it's been a long road to find a permanent home. And I'm really glad that you guys, that we've figured out a solution that works for everybody. Look forward to seeing the building and the community come to life out there.
Yeah. And again, just a big thanks to our community for supporting the district and our charter schools through the bond measures that have been passed forever. But really Measure K and now Measure C, you know, making it possible to purchase the land and, and give you a path forward. And now with Measure C, opening up the opportunity to get the, the meaningful amount of funding that would be needed to build your, to start to, to start to think about how you want to, you know, build the facilities out. So thanks again to the community also for supporting our charter schools. That's all I got. Sorry, I don't have questions for you, Susan. And I don't have questions for you either, Julie.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a public comment? All right. Yeah. Come say something.
Okay, now I'm gonna, you have to make it higher for me. So I'm Tricia. So I'm a Chair of Facilities and then also on the board. And I just wanted to say that working with the district through this process has been amazing. So you, the district's been super supportive. Julie has given us so much information and really helped guide us through this. So I just want to say thank you so much for helping support us through that. So it's really been a wild ride, and we're super excited. And you can feel the buzz in the community, I think, in our school, and everybody's excited for that next step because we've been working on it for years. So, so thank you.
Yeah, and also I wanted to acknowledge Jaclyn, because Jaclyn also was, played a big part in, in getting us to where we are today. So I think, yeah, just a hand for everybody for all your work in making it, making it happen. Do we have a motion? I'll make approval, actually. I may be quick on the draw this time.
I'll second.
There we go.
Fantastic. Any further discussion by the board? No, we'll start with you again.
Lando, aye.
Dalby, aye.
Concan, aye.
Robinson, aye, with just big smiles. It's been a long time, and I've been connected with this school with my own grandchildren attending. And so I, I'm so happy for you.
All right, it's approved. Yay. Have fun in December with them. We'll look forward to, well, they'll look forward to hearing back in March. I'll try to follow along, maybe. All right. And next up is under Human Resources. We're at 9.3.1 Discussion Action, the appointment of the Chico Unified School District Representative to the Personnel Commission.
Evening. So I'm here to basically recommend Gloria Bevers to continue as a Personnel Commissioner on the Personnel Commission. As we are a merit district, we have a Personnel Commission. As we are a merit district, we have a Personnel Commission. They serve for three-year terms. There's three of them, and each year, one of them comes up for either reappointment or if it's a vacant position, for new appointment. And one is appointed by CSCA, one's appointed by the district, and then they pick a neutral. And this year is the district's representative, and that's Gloria Bevers. She's been there since 2002. So this is her 22nd year of being a representative on the Personnel Commission. So I am here to recommend the appointment of Gloria Bevers to the Chico Unified School District Personnel Commission.
Comment, question?
When you're ready for, you're ready.
Gotcha. You're so funny. Do we have any public comment? Alrighty, then I'll call for a motion.
Thank you. I'll move appointment of Gloria Bevers as the district representative to the Personnel Commission with thank you to her for all of her years of service to the district and then to the Personnel Commission. Gloria's, you know, just been a rock.
She's wonderful to work for.
Yes.
Okay, we have a second by?
I'll second.
Member Conkin. Any further discussion, board? All right, we'll start the vote at the end.
Lando, aye.
Dolby, aye.
Conkin, aye.
Robinson, aye.
She's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
9.3.2 is Discussion Action, Sunshine Openers between Chico Unified School District and California School Employees Association, CSCA, Chapter 110 for 2025 to 2026. And I think it's with Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you, Madam President. So pursuant to Article 19 of the Collective Bargaining Agreement between Chico Unified and the California School Employees Association, Chapter 110, the two parties have exchanged openers for the 25, 26 school year. So we'll be discussing these items for the remainder of the school year. The articles particularly opened this year are Articles 2, Wages, 7, Health and Welfare Benefits. And additionally, CSCA is interested in opening Article 5 related to leaves and Article 12 related to organizational security. So we recommend approval.
Does the board have questions for clarification?
I just have a question. The wording says recommend approval of both openers. Isn't it acceptance because we're not approving the openers at this point? We're just accepting them as CSCA's first volley to us.
In essence, the board would be approving the district's interest in negotiating the second two articles.
Because that's part of the?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
I see no further questions from the board. Do we have a public comment on this item? All right, do we have a motion?
Sure, so moved.
I'll second that motion.
Alrighty, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the board? Hearing none, we'll start with you, Mr. Lando.
Lando, aye.
Dolby, aye.
Conkin, aye.
Robinson, aye.
All right, reading and a miss again. 9.3.3, Discussion Action, Resolution Number 1664-24, Elimination of Classified Staff Due to Lack of Work or Lack of Funds.
All right, so I am here to ask for approval for the elimination of the classified. There are actually positions that staff is, there's no people in these positions. So these positions are mainly things that have been changed. So either more hours, they're changing to IPs instead of school aides and things like that. And then they're on the books and we're just cleaning up the books. And so there's no folks in this, in these positions that you have before you. And, you know, we've also talked to, you know, the union to make sure that we didn't miss anything and everything was good with all of them.
Okay, I'm going to ask another silly question.
Yes, no worries.
Under fiscal implications, it says the district will save the cost of these positions. If these positions are vacant, how is that a true statement?
So I do believe they are on the books and Jaclyn would have to budget for them because they were on the books. And so with them being off the books, then it would be off the budget and we wouldn't need to. Jaclyn could clarify that.
Yeah, that's correct. So the position exists, so when we go to create the budget, and I'll be back next month to do first interim, if the position's there but no one's assigned to it, the system still generates, hey, we need to have a placeholder for those dollars. So what we've really put a focus on, I would say, in the last six to eight months is really looking at our position control and what is correct and what should be filled. And a lot of this that's in front of you this evening is cleanup of positions that have been vacated that haven't been filled, that really just need to be eliminated off the books. So we're not budgeting false dollars for positions we're not going to fill.
Thank you, Jaclyn.
So basically, the budget as it exists has earmarks for these positions. And by cleaning it up, it'll release those dollars to be shifted to somewhere else in the budget.
Yes, or savings to the bottom line, kind of thing, yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions? Public comment? Yeah, please. You know, the spiel, 30-second warning, three minutes. Sorry. It's just the question I had because when I tried looking at the attachment the other day, this wasn't the one that popped up. So one, two, three, four, I think it was five instructional paraprofessional positions. I understand that they are not filled. But my question is, like, what kind of impact is that having on the classrooms that these positions are not filled in? Because just because they're not filled doesn't mean they're not needed. So I'm just curious about that part of it. So if I can, clarification, that'd be great.
I can totally answer that. Thank you. So a few things, but with the IP positions, so we promoted some IPs to instructional paraprofessional intensive needs. And they were instructional paraprofessionals, and they moved up to intensive needs. So it left a surplus of vacant IP positions. And so that's some of what we have in here. And also, these are, none of them are six hours. And so we're trying to get all of our IPs to six hours. And so these are four and five hours that we are eliminating, and we could bring them back as six-hour positions. So.
Did that help answer your question? It's basically like, almost more like a reassignment. So they're not vacant positions that have just gone unfilled and need to be filled. They've transitioned to a different classification and therefore different pay, different training, and are still in those roles, but in a more robust status.
And we still have vacant positions.
Thanks for asking that question.
Good question.
All right, any other public comment? Okay, do we have a motion?
Sure, I will move Resolution 1664-24.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion by the board? Hearing none, we'll start with Mr. Lando.
Lando, aye.
Dolby, aye.
Conkin, aye.
Robinson, aye.
It passes. Thank you.
Don't touch that dial.
Keep cleaning it up. Sorry, are we on 9.3.5? Okay. Four, that's, it's because it's so similar. That's where I got hung up. I turned my page too soon. Okay, so this is Resolution 1665-24, Elimination of Classified Staff Due to Lack of Work or Lack of Funds.
So these were split into two groups. One was the CSCA Representative Group, and these are the non-representative groups. These are the restricted, in what you see as classroom aides and parent-restricted aides. And what we saw are more and more sites are, these are site-funded positions, and they are moving towards using IPs instead of parents and school aides, just a little more consistent and things like that. So these were recommended to be eliminated, and they're not going to be filled by sites.
Questions from the board? Public comment? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move approval.
Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion, board? Hearing none, we'll start with Mr. Lando.
Lando, aye.
Dolby, aye.
Conkin, aye.
Robinson, aye.
All right, it passes. Do you have another one?
I think that's it.
Thank you. Moving on to 9.3.5, this is Discussion Action, Resolution Number 166, sorry, 1666-24, Findings and Order in the Matter of Termination of a Certified Employee. Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you, Madam President. So California Education Code Sections 44932 and 44934 provide language to terminate a permanent certified employee for cause as determined following an evidentiary hearing requested by the employee. And as such, no such evidentiary hearing has been requested, and we recommend the approval of the resolution before you.
Support head of any further questions? Public comment? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 13199. No, I'm sorry, that's not correct. That's the employee number. Where's the resolution number?
1666-24.
Thank you. Oh, there it is, 1666-24. Thank you, Mr. Lando.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Robinson and a second by Ms. Conkin. Any further discussion, board? Hearing none, Mr. Lando?
Lando, aye.
Dolby, aye.
Conkin, aye.
Robinson, aye.
It passes, thank you. Next on the agenda is Number 10, Recognition of Outgoing Board Members.
Well, we have reached the end of an era here, or at least the end of four years. And we have two board members, Phil's going to help me out here because I am short, even with my high heels. Thank you. We have two board members that have been with us and really with us through some really difficult times. And myself, on behalf of all of Chico Unified and certainly our cabinet, want to say thank you. Unfortunately, Matt is not here, and he is on a wonderful trip with his boys, taking him back to the country where they were born and adopted. So we really appreciate him doing that and completely understand why he won't be here. But we will make sure that he gets the items that are for him. And Tina and Mike, Mike doesn't know this, but they're going to help me with this. So I have a few comments that I would like to say about both board members, but I'll start with Mr. Tennis. I'd like to take a few moments tonight to thank and celebrate Mr. Tennis for his four years of public service as a member of the Chico Unified School Board. During his time on the board, Matt has consistently brought unique and invaluable perspective, and we are grateful for his dedication, passion, leadership, energy, and humor. What stands out most about Matt is his unwavering commitment to his beliefs, combined with his genuine infectious sense of humor. Matt is someone who never hesitates to speak his mind. He is deeply passionate about the issues that matter to him, and you always know where he stands, always. But beyond his conviction, it is his humor that has lightened the mood during our most challenging discussions, bringing levity when it was needed most. Matt has a deep, deep love for his family, thus where he is tonight, friends, and our Chico community. His role as a parent has shaped his approach to the board, and we've all benefited from his ability to connect his personal experiences with his board responsibilities. Whether things are going well or we're facing challenges, his insights have helped us remain focused on the needs of those we serve. Matt is an unrelenting and steadfast advocate for what he believes is best, even when it meant standing alone. His courage and integrity in sticking by his beliefs, no matter the personal or professional cost, is admirable. Matt has also shown exceptional stewardship of our district resources, guiding us to make wise financial choices that ensure public funds are used responsibly and effectively. And perhaps most significantly, his deep concern for the safety of our schools has been a constant focus, guiding many critical decisions. Matt, wherever you are out there, hopefully it's somewhere fun. On behalf of Chico Unified, thank you for your time, your energy, and your commitment to our community. We are incredibly grateful for your service, and we wish you all the best in your future endeavors, and most especially in raising your beautiful family. We do have a couple of things for Matt, and I'm going to ask Matt and Tina and Mike to...
You know, I'm sure he's listening in right now wherever he is. I'm sure he's on the live stream.
So Matt's going to receive this beautiful plaque to put in his home to honor your service to the Chico Unified School District Board of Education. Matt Tennis, your guidance and dedication as a board member has strengthened the bond between our community and our schools. We thank you for your service from 2020 to 2024. And there should be one more thing in there. We did have staff members submit comments about each of our board members, and those are put together in a nice little frame about some of the things that came to mind when we asked staff about our board members. So that will go to Matt as well. So thank you very much. And Matt, wherever you are out there, thank you for four years of service to Chico Unified. All right, now Jaclyn and John get to help me. There should be another little bag over there. Isla, do you want to go sit with your mom? No, you don't have to. I wouldn't want to be up there either. So it's my privilege to thank and honor Caitlin Dolby for her dedicated service as a member of the Chico Unified Board. Over the past 12 years, that's eight as a teacher and four as a board member, Caitlin has made an insightful impact on our district, and we are incredibly grateful for her leadership and unwavering commitment to our students and community. Caitlin has served our community as a board member and board president during uncertain and difficult times, COVID, fires, many cultural disagreements. Thank you for that. Through it all, one of her greatest strengths has been her approachability. She makes it a priority to listen to all voices, whether parents, students, teachers, or community members. Caitlin has a unique ability to balance the needs of our district with the best interests of our students, consistently striving to find solutions that benefit everyone. Her dedication to continuous improvement and her commitment to doing what's best for our community have been remarkable. Caitlin also has a unique talent for taking complex, often challenging issues, and breaking them down into clear, understandable terms. She doesn't just present problems, she helps all of us see the bigger picture and work towards solutions. Her ability to simplify tough topics, often drawing on our own experiences, has been invaluable in guiding our district through difficult decisions. Caitlin possesses a deep and genuine commitment to students, whether advocating for students with disabilities or working to ensure that every child's voice is heard. Caitlin has been a tireless advocate for those who need it most. She brings creativity and compassion to her work, an approach that has led to important conversations about how we support students. As a busy working parent herself, it is clear Caitlin cares deeply for the students and families she serves. Her engagement in every board meeting, her drive to understand each issue thoroughly, and her passion for making thoughtful decisions have made her an instrumental part of our team. Caitlin, your dedication, your compassion, your advocacy for all students, especially those often overlooked, will leave a lasting impact on this board and in our community. We're grateful for all that you've done and thank you for your service. You will be missed, but your impact will continue for many, many years to come. Thank you. And we have some gifts for you as well.
At the risk, sorry, Phil, I think I can do this. At the risk of making you blush more. Works to develop solutions, creative thinker, approachability, and willingness to listen. Wide breadth of knowledge in the educational realm. Devoted, prioritizes the best interest of our students and district. Student advocate, cares deeply about educating our students. Student advocate, cares deeply about educating our students. Dedicated to continuous improvement, takes into account all of her constituents when making decisions, and is considerate to all concerns. Thank you.
Nobody said I'm funny?
We just did. And on behalf of Superintendent Staley, all of Cabinet, most importantly, all of staff and all the students, we think it's appropriate that you use this gavel to close this meeting.
I, uh, know Charlie also had some comments, and then we'll open it up to anyone else that might have some comments. But again, both to Kaitlyn and Matt, um, thank you so much. You volunteer, and there's not a lot of, uh, paybacks that come for taking on this job, and we really appreciate your time. Charlie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, uh, thanks, Kaitlyn, and I wish Matt were here. Um, I'd really like to share my appreciation, uh, with him as well, and I will reach out to him. I'm new to this, I'm not a seasoned school board attendee, and so seeing the work you do as a group has been really interesting and, and, um, rewarding to me. And my comment really has to do with you and Matt working together. I really appreciated seeing the two of you work as a team, um, to benefit students and families and teachers in Chico Unified School District. And I know you have different views and different approaches and different outlooks, um, but I really saw a productive working relationship based on mutual respect, um, and really based on the desire to improve our school district. And it's just gratifying to see public, um, public servants make that service to the, to the board or to the, to the district, um, a priority. So thank you for your public service, Kaitlyn.
Thanks, Charlie.
Can I make a motion at this point? I'd like to move that the board recognizes, uh, Kaitlyn Dolby is moderately funny. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Oh, um, just a couple of comments. Um, I, I don't take, it's oddly, I sit in this seat, and I actually really don't like being the center of attention. I don't think anybody believes that, especially, not my mom does not. But I get really bashful, and like, that's when I start to tell silly jokes. Um, I only have humor when I'm uncomfortable. Um, that's probably not true. My kid thinks I'm funny, that's what counts. Right, Isla? Yes, alright, that's great. Um, just my reflect on my last four years. Um, I have to, first and foremost, thank my mom for making this possible. Without her support, um, I wouldn't have childcare. Um, but she's, she's been there for me through all of the hard things. And I think we all have to have a person that we can lean on, and my mom's been that. Obviously, my whole life, but, um, you know, this position was a learning experience for me, as it is for anybody who's new, new to, uh, this, this, uh, situation. That's what I'm gonna call it. Um, and the other person I wanna thank is my kiddo for putting up with the chaos of our schedule and still growing into, uh, a bright, fun, strong, amazing, sparkly unicorn girl that she is. Um, and those are like my two biggest thank yous. I, I don't have very much left to give in terms of thanks, but, uh, I'm kidding. Um, I, I appreciate everybody that I've worked with. Um, I, I feel like there's give and take with everybody in a working relationship, and I can't look around this room and, and think that I didn't learn something or gain something from the work that we've done together. And so I have so much appreciation just for every single person that I've had the opportunity to engage with and to work with and to solve problems with and to commiserate with and, you know, tell jokes with. And, um, I, I wouldn't be the same person as I, I was, I'm not the same person I was four years ago either. Um, and so I'm just grateful for the opportunity that the community gave me to be in this position and to, um, be supportive of the district and, um, doing what's best for all students. And so with that, thank you, uh, everybody for your kind words. Um, and we can move on, unless anybody really wants to draw this out.
We, we have a public comment.
Oh, yes. I forgot my thank you card, so I wanted to take a moment to really thank you for everything that you have done, um, like Mr. Shepherd shared. A lot of people recognize the advocating that you have done for those specialty groups, me as well. Um, I can't count how many times I've been sitting in the audience, and you have heard what, um, I have said as a concerned parent and made motions, and I've done like literally little cheering in my seat when you've done things, um, because I know that you're listening and I know that you're paying attention. Um, and it's been exciting to kind of see you grow into your role over the last four years. Um, and I was, I was a fan of you from the beginning, when you first announced that you were gonna run. So, again, thank you so much for everything that you have done. Just validating concerns I have had as a parent, um, and your presence will definitely be missed on the board. I am very sad that you will no longer be on our board. Um, but thank you for everything that you've done.
Madam President? Thank you. I, I know I've, uh, commented a couple of times about length of your, um, speeches. What I wanna do now is thank you for the length of your speeches. You have always taught me something. You have a depth of knowledge in areas that I have, um, you know, very little knowledge of, and you have contributed that knowledge to this board and to our actions. And sitting here and being able to learn from you has been a, a real pleasure. And I appreciate you and have really appreciated the service with you. Thank you.
I would like to add on to that, if you don't mind. Echoing how Mr. Snyder said, um, it has been so important to have someone in a leadership position who can work with all the many varied personalities and, uh, positions. I really, really appreciate that you've taken on that often thankless role of, um, making sure we get along well enough to get the job done. That's, I mean, incredibly important, especially with the last, uh, some of the big issues we've been facing lately. And also, I just wanna thank you personally. Um, I have been very much, uh, inspired by your advocacy to be a little bit louder than I think I would have been about the things that, that I see important. And, um, I wanna thank you for giving a, a better example for me about how to be a good board member. We will miss you.
I think what I would like to say is, um, I've really appreciated your authenticity. Um, I find you to be a very real person, and, um, that resonates with me. Um, I think we've bonded over the fact of, that we're both moms, and, um, genuinely, we have the same goals and, um, interests in mind for the district as well as our own families. So it's been, um, really rewarding to, to recognize how much we have in common through this, um, through this experience. So I hope we're not saying goodbye and just more like, we'll see you later on the other side.
I like that. I'll see you later. Um, I had a, I had a last note, and now I've lost it, and that's okay, 'cause, right, we're, we're running out of time. Um, I know what I was gonna say. My final statement in my position as, as a s- school board member for Chico Unified and board president is, um, it's all about relationships. And we have to remember that we can't make progress until we find common ground. And so it's really important to me that everybody moving forward maintains that, that, um, that spirit of, um, relationship building and, and, um, meeting, meeting people where they're at. So thank you all for the opportunity, um, and for the very kind words and, uh, the experience of a lifetime, really, truly. So, um, with that, I'm gonna move on in the agenda. Thank you, everybody. Um, yeah, tears and all the good stuff. Uh, next on our agenda is items on the floor. Are there any other comments the public would like to make at this time? No. Um, and second to last item is board member request to agendize an item. Um, we don't have any at this time. Um, the process is to submit, uh, a comment, or sorry, submit an item for, um, agendizing, um, in the future. So remember that's there. And, uh, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Oh. Um, I move that we adjourn. So moved. Oh, yeah, so moved.